Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um Jerry, I remember him mentioning, was it this month he's gonna be out? Wasn't he traveling again?
I believe he said he was not going to be here, that's correct.
Okay, so we may have, if Kate doesn't come on, then you don't have a quorum.
Well, the question is this, I have, I have a total right now of five members in the committee. I have uh four members that are permanent full members and I have uh one Board of Ed member for a total of five appointed members that have not resigned. And I have three onboard the call now between myself, Gary and Pete McIntyre. So I have three of five. Would that not be a forum?
Okay, okay, so the Board of Ed members, okay, she's technically not a board member of the PMBC. She is a member um that was appointed or assigned for the school project. So technically, she and her and Bob, like when Bob went on, they should not have been voting on PMBC business.
Uh but they're on to vote for the, but they're voting members. Uh we have non-voting members that are specified in the Charter as non-voting members, but I have three out of my four uh permanent members on the committee right now.
Right, but you have, you have a vacancy, so you have five, one, two, three, four, five. You have five members of the PMBC.
And I have three on the call. That's a quorum.
I only see you and, oh no, Gary's there.
Gary's there, he's, he's waving.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't see Gary. Oh, I didn't, I have to expand my thing here.
Now, we've, we've seen in the last 10 years, we've interpreted our membership to include um the, the, if you have a vacancy, right? Uh how does the, a voting member would be only a voting member when they've been uh signed, uh what do you call, appointed, correct?
But it, but it reads it, even if you have a vacancy, that's still, that's still a spot, that's not there.
Okay.
So. Yeah, so they need to, so my point is like Kate and Bob, they're not, they're not PMBC members. Uh they're not permanent, they're not, they're not, they're not PMBC members, just like when you did the police station, you had, I don't know who it was at the time.
We had, we had, we had two assigned from the police department.
Right, right.
But they voted on, they always voted on items that were for that project, but not generic GMBC items.
Correct, and this is the same, this is the same with Bob and Kate, they're not PMBC members. They're just appointed because of the school projects, and that's when I, I think I emailed you the ordinance, I guess it was, the ordinance, and it states right in there that the um whoever's appointed on those school projects only vote on whatever project they're assigned to.
Correct, that's what I thought, right, so what we had done in the past is um if we have generic PMBC items that are not to a project to which they were appointed, we need the regular committee for, and in this case here, um so I have, as far as vacancies go, um anyway, I have three out of my five slots right now.
Right, and we just, you just have one, really, you just have one vacancy for the PMBC, that's Steve, we're just.
I have, and I have three members here, so I should be able to vote tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, it's five oh four, I call this a special meeting of the Town of Leger Permanent Municipal Building Committee to Order. Um and this is a special meeting, so we have to stick to the agenda. Um we can talk about a few things, pay some bills tonight. Um our next meeting, by the way, after this is only three weeks out, if I'm doing the math correctly on that. And um but there's a couple of things I want to address as we get going, so uh this meeting is being held by Zoom. I'm gonna start out with a uh a roll call, uh please state your name, um uh one at a time, Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
He back at our Vice Chair.
Wayne Donaldson, Board of Education.
Stephen June Silver Petraselli.
And Dan Hettler, ONG.
All right, with that, we have a quorum, we'll continue, um and if anyone else joins in, Lisa, you have to see them pop in on participants, just uh please uh let me know. I'll try to watch the same. All right, the next item we have is minutes approval for the meeting of one March twenty twenty one. Uh so I'll entertain uh motions to approve those minutes.
Move it, approve those meetings, right?
Okay, uh Mr. McIntyre has moved uh to approve the minutes, do I have a second?
Uh Gary Schneider, second.
Said by Mr. Schneider, is there any discussion on the meeting minutes for one uh March twenty twenty one? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as written, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
He back at our, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
With that, the eyes have it, the motion carries. All right, uh next item I have here is um, we're gonna talk about the Leger School Improvement Project. Um this is uh just a general statement I wanted to make before we get into this. Uh I've had uh recent uh, you know, this is related to really item one discussion and possible action. Uh but before I mention that, we're just talking about our meeting minutes that we just approved. Uh Lisa, I know that you've seen some of the emails going back and forth from the Chair of a Town Council with respect to reporting for uh meetings and for um uh actions taken by committees. Um so I've gotten several emails on that, and I just wanted to reiterate to the committee that um the, the state requires of committees, boards uh at the municipal uh and state level uh for us to post the results of any votes that we take uh within uh forty-eight hours of our meeting and that we post our minutes, even if they're draft, within seven days. Am I reading that correctly, Lisa?
So yes and no, so the votes do have to be recorded within forty-eight hours. The minutes have to be posted, it says in the municipality and in the Town of Leger, there, the, the home is, the final home is the clerk's office. So they have to be posted in the clerk's office within um seven days. So what is happening, so what I found out with this new iCompass, first of all, we never got really any formal training on it, we all kind of learned ourselves. So what I found out through Roxanne is when, cause I'm like, the minutes are there, what do you mean they're not there? The minutes are done, the votes are there. So what happens is in our, in the iCompass system where it says publish, there's a draft and there's a final. I don't, I, so when I do them and when I publish them, like within the seven days, I publish them as a draft. Unbeknownst to me and ninety percent of the other people using the system, when you post as a draft, the public can't see that.
Ah.
The public doesn't see it until you post as a final, and I usually don't do that until like the following meeting when you guys, or no, I'm sorry, before the, like on Thursday, like when I send them to you, then I usually post them as a final, then I send them all out. So like I said, a lot of us did not know when we do our minutes in the draft in the iCompass system that the public can't see that.
Okay.
So what, so what Roseanne said, Roseanne, excuse me, Roxanne is um what she does is she posts, what she does is she posts them as, like as she's working on them, she posts them when she first does it as a final. But what she'll do is like on the first header, say where it says like call to order, she'll just type in their draft, so it's in there, like in the website, I guess. But uh but then when she posts them here in the clerk's office, obviously, we take that out. So that way, cause I guess Mr. Hosey also had um some issues with Roxanne's council meetings um that things were askew and the, something about the information, and Roxanne emailed him back and explained to him that you know, this is a draft, there's still a working, it's still a working um document, you know? So that's what's happening.
Okay, so when you put the draft, that thing out as final, so let's say like, all right, today's Monday. So let's say tomorrow or the next day, you finish up putting together at least our votes, cause I know with the system, when we vote, you kind of just click on what we voted on, right? Based on the agenda?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just have to put the motion and yeah, I click on who, who, you know, who made the motion, who's second, and the voting, yeah. So it's just a matter of clicking, and that's what, yeah, that's what I do.
So once that's out there, can you just even put like a watermark up? Cause this starts out as a word document, right?
Um, you know, no, this system, this system is, is a little, this system, and that's why some of the, there's like fields and you can't it's, this system I think is more difficult than, the other one had a lot more steps to be able to produce the document. This one, there's not as many steps, but it doesn't flow as nicely.
Well, as long as you put draft at the top and not yet approved or something like that, and then when we vote, we vote on the minutes, then you can just remove that and uh, cause you can, after it's final, can you still make changes?
Well, what happens is, we, what happens is like, cause we have to, you, you technically through FOI, you have to have them posted in the clerk's office within seven days, so obviously, you're not gonna have, you know, nobody has a meeting within seven days to approve the minutes. So what happens is you still, you still have to post them in the clerk's office, and then at our next meeting, and actually, I think I did it on one of the meetings last month where um John Marshall, we, I had as a staff member and not as council. So what happened was, so those minutes were already posted as him as a staff member, but at the following meeting, when you guys went to approve them, so then I made a notation correction of, you know, and then I say what the correction is.
Okay, so, yes, and, and, and maybe the correction is just going in and removing draft or whatever. Uh I also know that uh Chair of the Town Council said that technically, all you have to do is print out your draft and post it on the bulletin board in the clerk's office um to be legal.
Well, again, nothing can be draft when it comes in here, so it's the, the mayor actually sent out, I don't think, I think he only sent it to staff members last week. Um kind of reiterating and not really correcting, I guess maybe correcting what Chairman Davis had said um about that, because again, the, what counts is what's here in the clerk's office, and that's what has to be posted within seven days.
Okay, well, I, I, I knew that when I brought this up, that you'd, you'd, you'd actually give us a little bit of schooling on how it all works, and I was confident you were doing it, I just didn't understand that nobody could see them.
Right, and that's, that was the system, like I said, a lot, none of us knew when, when we go in under the draft, under the iCompass system, that the public couldn't see that.
Okay, so at this point here, we had basically a systematic problem, not a, not a, a woeful neglect problem, so I think we're in good shape moving forward. Um if you would, um uh when, when it does go out um on this one, when you, when you, when they're available, uh just, so essentially, what you're saying is the forty-eight hours, you're actually putting together the whole thing.
No, it's not real, not the forty-eight hour, I'm just going in and I'm clicking on, I'm clicking on the motions.
And then that's a bit oval to the people when you make that uh public?
Well, now I know, well, now I know, when I do that, when I, I'll publish it immediately, and I'll publish up again in our system, it's a systematic thing, I'll publish it in our system as a final. So that way, the public can see that, and then again, as I'm, as I'm working on the minutes, it, I, I'll put like in the system, so it'll say draft until like the seven day mark or six day or whatever, until I've completed them. Then I'll take that draft off and I'll put them in the system, um you know, as a, as a final.
So the public just goes to the meeting and looks at the minutes and they'll see the votes uh within forty-eight hours?
Right, the public, they can go on the portal, click on the minutes, and all they'll see at that time are just them, in the, within the forty-eight hours, all they'll see are just them, unless I happen to finish the whole, the minutes, but at least they'll be able to see the motions.
Right, and for the committee, just to let you know, this is not beat up Lisa in any way possible, she's doing a great job. The issue here was uh that a survey of all the towns' commissions and boards, we're talking cemetery committee, library committee, commission, everyone. Um because of this, you know, we've changed out the systems a few times, none of us were meeting the state requirement for this, which is pretty onerous when you think about it, volunteer committees and stuff. Uh but I, the town has learned a little bit about that, and we're making sure we uh, we meet the requirement, so.
Yeah, and they were, but they just weren't in this, they weren't in the system, which is, yeah.
It was a, it was a technical issue more than anything.
Exactly.
All right, that's beside, behind us now. Hey, the last thing I want to mention to uh for the committee while you're all online here is that I did have that meeting with the Town Council, uh it was a, a long meeting, we talked through uh the slides that I had presented to you last. After that, we had a working group with members of the Board of Ed, myself, the Town Council. Uh and we went and rehashed some of the things from that meeting and, and talked in uh great detail about some of the things we're gonna talk about tonight, punch list items mostly, and the main thing about how we get to closure on these projects. So with that, before I get any further, what I'd like to do is to get an update on the, on the schools. Um we'll start out with um ONG going first this time, so that Wayne can weigh in afterwards on that. And there's just two things I want to point out to here right now, is as we go through our discussion, we're gonna approve some change orders tonight, I believe, and um but we're at the point where uh, you know, Leger Middle School is closed out in the fact that we've made final application for payment, all the change orders are in. Uh but in the Gallup Hill School, we need to not have any more new change orders that we, and we're gonna talk about the roof uh in Gallup Hill here a little bit, about uh some ladder, or not ladders, but um access uh systems to help get up and over those uh uh air conditioning ducts up on the roof, but adding more change orders just prolongs this process to a uh, a never-ending process. So we want to really, really hold back on additional change orders for new work that has not already been uh funded. So with that, Dan, if you would start with uh either school and lead the discussion, we'll go all the way through one school, through everyone, and then we'll shift to the other school to keep things in sync.
Okay, at the, at the beginning with the Gallup Hill School, our focus has been on working on the Wednesdays and getting additional punch list items complete. Um Chris Rizzi's been down there and in and out with the, with the trades. Um some of the things he's reported back to me are that the, the closer arms that we uh, we were waiting for product for a while, and we thought we were gonna have to wait until uh this week for the April break, uh they were actually able to get started, so that work is in process and will finish this week. The painter will be there this week, and of course, at Gallup Hill, the other work that was done was the um significant number of the tiles that had damage uh either from drips or uh, yeah, mainly from, from ceiling drips were replaced, and then the uh, the, the item to provide heat into the uh, into the vestibules, the infrastructure was run electrically. Um and we're just waiting on the actual uh electric unit heaters to come in for the install. Um in general, we had, since I gave Steve an update on the thirtieth, we completed twenty of the forty-seven items that were remaining on the bunch. At the, uh at the middle school.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Uh when you say twenty out of forty-seven, that's not like nineteen door closers, door closers are one item, or not in that list?
Uh not on my list. I'm not tracking that as a, as, those are just not a punch on my punch, uh they don't get a number on my punch list, is what I.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh over at the, uh at the LMS, the.
Hey Dan, I wanna, I wanna do everything just in Gallup Hill first before we go to the other, uh so the the items that you mentioned here, what it, when I spoke to you last, you had said that the ONG's goal is to be done with uh everything on the punch list completely Gallup Hill by the end of April, is that still a good projection?
Yep, I don't see anything on this list that doesn't get corrected uh by the end of the month. Most of the uh, there's a couple items we need to clarify what we're going to do, you know, as far as we have some damage, one of the projectors is damaged, one of the speakers is damaged, they're both working right now. So we either provide the product, um you know, for an attic stock, or we go ahead and replace the units. Um or you take the credit back from the trade. Um outside of that particular item, we have to come to resolve on what the exterior punch list remain is, we have some uh, some cracks, some chips, some things that we've walked in the past, but uh didn't get removed from the punch list, and I didn't want to remove them without coming to, to an agreement to closure on that. Um but even that could be done by the end of the month. So now I, I foresee, you know, Chris's efforts this week and then any mop up next week.
Okay, while we're still on the Gallup Hill School, I'd like to go over, shift over Steve June for a moment, and then we'll go to Wayne last.
Um yeah, my time at Gallup Hill, uh it's probably about a half an hour worth of work a week. Um anything that Wayne has questions or answers for, um I've been giving him the information, so mechanical engineer, I haven't heard anything from her. Um so my work is pretty, pretty much limited.
At this point.
Waiting for the punch list, with that.
Steve, at this point, um is, is the work that Marty was doing uh related to HVAC, is that pretty much come to a close now?
That's what I hear, yes.
Okay, I'll be talking about trying to button that up in, uh yeah, I know you already sent me some data on the cost associated with that work. Um I want to kind of put some caps on that enclosure to see how much we, we actually spent uh, now that it's almost, it's essentially done. Uh the other item, before I turn over to Wayne, Steve, my understanding is that uh we have the specifications for roof access, uh I hate to use the word ladder, but up and over type systems to uh allow Wayne's team uh like portable, uh I hate to say ladders, but vertical, what's the word?
Yeah, I've been calling them crossovers.
Right, my understanding is the specs for that have been prepared, um and I had a discussion with Dan and with Wayne on that. Um and the committee will have a discussion on this as we continue to move forward, but I believe the best interest of a school would be to take the specs and just go outside the contract to have those made and put up on the roof. That'll stop us from change orders and having to continue this out further to the right. Uh so if you can provide those specifications directly to Wayne.
I have already.
Okay, good, thanks, and I think we'll just go out and get some bids for that outside the contract, not that we don't love you guys at ONG, but we think it'll help close out the project quicker. Um and uh it may actually wind up costing us a little less in addition.
Okay, and Wayne, just to let you know, there are two different companies in that proposal request to choose from. I did not mention that to you earlier.
No problem, thank you.
All right, uh Steve, do you have anything else, Steve June?
That's it.
All right, Wayne, uh over to you on the Gallup Hill School, um and is, are you in alignment with what uh uh Dan has been saying about the uh uh productivity?
Um well, I know the uh door closers were changed, uh the whole, the hold opens, not really the closers, there are arms on the closers. Um I saw the contractor in there, um so I believe that is complete. Um I haven't seen uh or gotten much other reports except for the ceiling tiles uh which were changed, except for two or three rooms which had staff working in them, they couldn't get into, uh so I believe that's been done. Um I do have some concerns, I'm not sure, I don't have any information on what they're having the painter do, um because some of the rusting steel and stuff. It's not gonna solve the problem just to paint over it, cause the rust is gonna come right back through that paint. They're gonna have to get down to the base and, and either sand that rusty spots off and re-prime and stuff, but I'm not sure what they're doing there. Um the other major big issue uh besides HVAC is the uh um blocking in the walls for the TVs in the pre-K and kindergarten, um so I don't know if they've got that scheduled for this week or not. Getting onto the HVAC, we still have that one solitary room that they couldn't maintain heated, uh that was still running an electric heater in there up till point when it got warm. Uh so before the heating season ended, hopefully it's ended, um we still didn't have any resolution on that one single room. Uh now we are having problems with overheating the rooms because of, you know, the, that shoulder situation. Um we've been looking at it, um and I did talk to Marty on it today, the engineer. Um and he wasn't, he agreed with me that it didn't seem to be operating properly. We had like sixty-six degree outside air, and rooms were seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-eight, and they were pumping seventy-degree air in there and not opening the outside dampers to bring more of the cooler fresh air in, uh so he was looking into that. Um so that's pretty much where we stand, um we have a theory that the one room that has the highest temperatures, which is two oh one sits directly above the boiler room, so we're thinking that it might getting an excess heat load um from the boiler room. Uh we're tending to shut down the boilers today to see how that room fluctuated, uh but it was a little cool, so hopefully it'll be warm enough tomorrow. We can get the boiler shut down for a few days, and then we'll monitor the temp in there.
I just wanted to ask, on the blocking of the walls, while Dan's here, um the painters are, that's not painters coming in behind that wallwork, is it? Uh you mentioned the painters?
Uh no, no, the painting operations will be the ones over at uh at Leger this week uh at the middle school. Um the painting that was done was the completion of the work that needed to be done uh as far as the punch and the safe room and a couple of other items that, that we had, that Wayne had identified, in particular uh you know, one of the pipes in, in the stairwell had rusted and uh, and was repainted, but so as, with regard to the blocking though, Chris Rizzi has done some investigative work and, 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 you know, he's spec for locations for wood blocking, he's gonna have to get with you, Wayne um to, to physically be in the same space and, and show you what he's found, as far as the initial blocking was uh was lower than where these mounts are mounted, so the blockies in the wall uh at the first floor anyway. But not in coordination with where the brackets, where these new slide brackets um need to mount.
Well, there's no new slide brackets on those.
Then I better, I better yield and, and make sure that I get.
Brackets at the correct height.
Again, I, I, then I misspoke, cause I want to make sure that he gets with you.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to.
The elevations that were given in the.
Yeah, I'm in every day.
What the?
I'm in every day, and I'll meet with him, you know, whenever he wants.
Appreciate it.
All right, just one item that you mentioned there on Dan, on the projectors and speakers that were damaged, I believe due to a roof leak, correct?
Uh it's actually a hydronic leak.
I'm sorry, hydronic, um so my, my, well, liquid, um so in this case, Wayne, uh your call, if you want them to install the new ones, fine, but if the current ones are working in place and they're I think you probably want to take the stock, put it on the shelf, um if you do that, they'll never, ever fail, but if we take a credit against the contract, they'll fail a week. If you do that, they'll never ever fail, but if we take a credit against the contract, they'll fail a week later.
I'm fine with taking the stock and we'll take care of swapping it out if it fails.
Okay, I think so, Dan, I think that'll work, so move in that direction and there's no cost difference then, correct?
Right, right.
Less paperwork for all, Dan, just put them on a shelf, Wayne, put them on a shelf somewhere and I'm sure one will fail somewhere. All right. So with that, let's roll over to the Leonard Middle School. And how are things going there? Dan, you go first again, the same order.
Okay, as as mentioned, the closer arms got started over there, they're not finished. The other items that I have from Chris, the radon fans that were installed and and were not self-supporting on the. On the Fernco have been mechanically corrected. So that the radon fans are in place, the turns out the wiring was actually installed and coiled up, you know, there's a. An MC cable coiled up underneath the roof deck, so we're gonna take care of Ferguson's gonna go out and finish the work. And tie in the radon fans, that's work scheduled for, it's imminent, he said this week. The Leonard School painter will be out this week finishing up, or actually, this was the comment to Wayne is that. They're gonna go through and do the the corridor repair work. And so if there's if there's a question or I'll be sure that Chris gets in touch with you as far as the day that they're gonna be there and make sure they get the extent. Of what needs to be painted. The punch list that was was completed off to to reduce the list was primarily on the exterior metal or. The exterior siding panels. I saw photos of the white panels that were all repaired on the south side of the building over the cafeteria. And then we were informed but haven't backchecked yet that the blue panels over on the addition. You know, over by the chiller, those have also been touched up, repaired, so that's something to be backchecked. Let me make sure that I've hit everything. Yes, I have.
All right, Steve June.
It's gonna be the same as Gallup Hill, probably less than a half an hour for the middle school worth of my time. The mechanical engineer is even less. Just waiting for the punch list to get completed. So we can check on it.
Okay, and now roll over to Wayne, please.
Okay. Dan, did you get any documentation? I haven't got any written documentation on the agreement with the painter to come back for the next four seasons? I have not yet, Wayne. Okay, all right, so you can forward that when you do get it. I also haven't gotten the update on the access ladders and and the hatch ladder going up to through the roof. That's been a heavy, I'll interject right if you don't mind, that's been heavy on our minds as well, we're putting. Extreme amounts of pressure on on quality or QSR steel as he's called now. To get out there and and give us a date for when the when those things will be put in. I'm really hoping that they're out there this week. I don't have that for sure, but I but I'm we're at wit's end with with waiting for that work to be to happen.
The R in QSR is not for responsive?
Say again, Steve?
The R in QSR was not for responsive?
And no.
All right, I'm sorry to interrupt, keep keep going, what else?
That's all right, I don't know where we stand on the roof leaks, the last I had heard, I believe Dan had told me that they thought they were coming in through the. HVAC rooftop units. Has there been any update on that? There hasn't, other than the conversation, I had another conversation with Action Air, excuse me. His thought was that with higher velocities of air being dragged in that we might be actually pulling air in through the return, outside air return. It's unvalidated and you know, he's hanging his hat on that. We're we're still not satisfied with that response and we need to figure it out.
But that these were occurring before we started before COVID.
Right, and and only and they seem to still have some correlation to the weather, you know, it's. Yes, had the roofer out there so many times that we don't think it's anything related to the membrane or the flashing. On the unit itself, but it still seems weather driven, which gives some, you know, validity to Action Air's comment. But I'm not convinced, you know, it's it's pretty hard to draw air and. Draw air fast enough to suck in rainwater to the extent where it's it's gonna cause a problem.
Right, but I mean, even if it is, the the unit should be designed with baffles or something to prevent that at its maximum. About velocity.
Yep, and we're just having a little trouble getting trained. York out there to. To participate, we're we're wrapping them up and and trying to keep them on a on a short leash. But it's it's still open on the list.
All right, you got my email on that new problem we're having in three eighteen?
The door, yeah, the the door you think was taking water?
Well, that's that's right above unit with the damaged door that the roofer's damaged that haven't replaced yet. But now it looks like it's coming down within the wall cavity, because I can't see it in the ceiling. But the paint on the wall is starting to peel off. Bubbles like you would from water behind it.
Okay, well, we'll have to get out there this week and and dive right into that one.
And that is directly underneath the unit, almost dead center, and that sits right above the wall, so. And I'm wondering if that's the same problem that we're having with the moldy smell in that room, it's been a continual problem. There in three ten. Have been moldy smells continuing and. And both of those have leaks right above the A R H the Rahu units on the roof.
I wasn't aware of any. Any moldy or any concerns of of wetness, you know, other than the ones that were from.
It's only a smell.
A year ago.
And I haven't smelled it, but I'm getting that from the staff. And it it seems to be a day or so after rain. But you can definitely, like in three ten, you can still see the mold, I won't say moldy, but wet ceiling tile from where it's been. You know, for the last year and a half.
We'll have to have somebody down there this week, take a look, see if we can find, get some wet weather as well.
The roofers have been out and they supposedly opened the unit and saw a bunch of water in there. So that's why they kicked it back to. To, you know, Action Air.
Do you know when they were on site?
A year and a half, almost two years ago, year and a half ago, good.
Yeah, the Action Air has been out long after that and told me that, you know, I shared your email, he came back to me with, he had been out there. A year plus ago and that they thought they had corrected the issue.
Well, it is, it's still leaking, I don't know if they ever changed the ceiling tile, but it was dripping through there a week and a half or two weeks ago.
Okay, anything further on the Ledger Middle School? I understand the roof leak problem because, you know, figuring out exactly where water is leaking from. Kind of like when I had a leak in my car, trying to figure out whether it was coming through the windshield, you know, each. It's difficult, you know, obviously if you had a bunch of colored water, we could, you know, dye the water and try to figure that out, but. I'm sure that the roofer has all kinds of tricks of the trade. Anything else on either of those two things, any of the two school projects we just discussed? All right, Lisa, before I talk any further, while we were talking there, I pulled up the copy of the. PMBC ordinance one hundred dash zero one five. To go back through the rules to make sure I fully understand before we vote on anything that would, other than minutes, that would be considered to be a project vote. And there are regular members of five, it says. And. Then it says temporary members for each municipal project, up to two temporary members who are a member representative of the proposing body. Shall be appointed by the town council for board of education projects, at least one temporary member shall be a board of education member. Temporary members shall have the right to vote on the activities of the PMBC only with respect to the particular project for which such members are were appointed. And it says a quorum shall consist of a majority of voting members, so based on that, I have. Considering that a vacancy is part of my five, right?
Correct.
I have seven total for the purposes of school project.
But I I I think you're reading that incorrectly because. As it states there, you're you're voting, your voting members are your five PMBC members.
But it says temporary members shall have the right to vote on activities of the PMBC.
Have the right to vote, it's not that they're voting members, but they shall have the right to vote. On that particular project.
This is a quorum shall consist of a majority of voting members. For the committee here. You know, one thing I don't want to do, especially when we get into reimbursement for the state for approved payments and things, is to have anyone say that. We didn't have the authority to approve a payment. Pete, you and and Gary both. I'm not, I'm trying to err on the side of caution here, we've never had a situation in the past where we. Voted with less than four votes on anything since we've been in the seven member thing, so. How? How do you guys read that requirement? Go ahead and start with you, Pete.
I I kind of agree with Lisa, I think the only way the appointed members could, other than PMB PMBC. Can vote on something is it's like if something comes up on the. On the alleged middle school requires a vote from the Board of Education for people, then that would, they're they're eligible, not. Say we have a different project that. Clause for a vote that has nothing to do with Board of Education, they have they have no right to vote on them.
Well, right, I I agree with you on on that, I'm talking about when we vote on paying bills and approving things for. The school projects that are, we have these bills to pay. I would argue that they are voting members for that, so they have to.
They are, yes, I agree with that, however said, if there if there's a. That affects the middle school or the or the the Gallup Hill School, they've got the right to vote on them.
Right, but, all right, and Gary Schneider?
I go with you, Steve, for the those projects, they're voting members, it just makes sense that we need to have. A majority of the people who vote and that's that's them, that includes them.
Yeah, I think for, I think what I'll do is, and as we have a couple of things here, one. We don't want to delay some of these change orders because they affect ONG's closing us out and getting us further down. So at the same time, I don't want to put us in a position where we we have a vote that someone can question our vote. I would rather hold another special meeting in two weeks. And take care of these things at that meeting and play it safe because we have operated the committee under that guidelines the entire time. Up to now, in the ten years I've been on this committee and Pete, you've been here just as long as me. And I think that we would be safer to do that in this particular case, we can have plenty of discussions. But the vote and the and the minutes, we've always considered to be a generic PMBC business because they're they cover everything. But the in the case of voting on payments, I think. The town, no one can, at the state level or anywhere can question the validity of that in our minutes against our charter. So I thought we were gonna have four members at tonight, we don't, we I did reiterate that we have. A permanent vacancy and that we have a vacancy on the board of ed appointment. And that person does not have to be a member of the board of ed, the board of ed can appoint the principal of the school if they want. You know, the only requirement would be that that person obviously would be a Leonard resident, so.
My understanding, Steve, is, for example, if we're voting on the. Laying the laying the turf on the new on the new field that Leonard Leonard's at Leonard High School. The Board of Education point, he cannot vote on anything that has to do with that payment or.
In the case of the of the track and field, that was a board of ed project, so that would still fall under the proposing body. Right, but if we were doing, if we were doing a roof on the town hall.
Yes.
They would not vote, so.
That's why I would I would understand it too.
So if if my three voting members that are on the committee now agree that we we probably shouldn't vote on these things. I'd like to try to push for two weeks to the right if if that works. There's one other item I wanted to discuss, and I know, Dan, you need these change orders approved, so you can go to your next step.
Just a just a question, Steve, because Kate wasn't at our last meeting either, so and she's the only board of ed member. That's on the committee, so.
But we had, we had, we had four members of the seven. We still had a quorum because Jerry was on.
Oh, I see, I'll say you're seeing, yeah, see, I don't, whatever, I don't agree, I don't agree with that, because you can't. You, if you're counting them as, if you're counting them, the board of ed members as voting on a school project. Then they should. They should be there to be able to vote, you can't, I don't know, so you're counting them as a voting member. Only for that project that they're on.
Correct, so when we were running the police station project at the same time that we were running the board of ed projects. We had a meeting where, at the beginning of the meeting, we did police business, the police station people voted on those items. When we shifted to another Roman numeral that we were under the school project, the police people could stay, but they couldn't do anything. And then the board of ed side came in. So we we actually had some really complicated minutes then with the two projects going, but that's the way we've always interpreted it, that they're voting members. On the project to which they, the proposing body, so when we had a live, give me an example, we had a library project for a little while. During the time we had the police station and the school projects going at the same time, when we did that project, only the five permanent PMBC members could vote on that.
Right.
And when we scheduled our meetings, like at the beginning of the year when all our meetings are gonna be held, only the permanent PMBC voted on that.
Right, right.
So I think we'll err on the side of caution and not vote on these, and when we change this ordinance next and refine it. I'm gonna have additional language put in there to to cover these situations to make it more clear.
Okay.
Okay, with that, there's two other things I need to, first of all, is there anyone that's on the call that can't? I would try to go a week to the right, but I'm gonna be out of town a week from today on the nineteenth. That we're actually traveling again in 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 the world. And it's gonna be fully vaccinated, so the. I'm looking at the twenty sixth as an option, I don't want to wait all the way to the third of May.
Is Jerry gonna be back by then?
I will find out from him or, in fact, if you can. I'll contact Kate to make sure she will be at the meeting. I think.
Shoot an email tonight out to the.
Yeah, just see who's available for the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the alternate date would be anytime after the twenty first next week. Because I'll be back by Tuesday. But I don't want to let those things fester too long, because I know, Dan, you know, we're we're getting to where we have to close things out, so.
Steve, I got a question, is there any motion, any people looking for a fifth president building committee member?
Yeah, I'm gonna I'll mention, I will mention this, that I did point that to out to the town council that we have that vacancy, that vacancy we fill by Democrat, Republican or. An independent or an affiliated. Or any other parties you can think of, so if somebody knows someone with. With experience in in any of the areas that we tend to deal with and, you know, finance, construction, engineering. That would be wonderful, if anyone knows air conditioning inside and out, that would probably be worth more than anything, so. Please see what we can do there, if you know people, please ask them to contact the. Republican or Democratic Town Committee members that nominate folks, or just contact me and I'll get their names out there, be happy to do that, so. All right, so I've got another item to discuss here before we. Roll on, I've had a little discussion with Wayne about this already and. One of the things I brought up to the working group was that we've been on this project now. For, I guess, we did our referendum, what, twenty fifteen, did I get that right? And we started the project by twenty fourteen with the initial work, so this thing is now a seven year from the inception of the idea until where we're at, it's about seven years. And, you know, we don't know when the state's gonna do the audit, but one thing we do know is that. We want to get this as close to being closed out as possible. And I hate to say it, but hand the state everything that they need to do the audit in a, you know, in a nice package with a nice big blue satin bow on it. And say, here's everything you need to audit Leonard, so we can get our eleven percent retainage, get the answer on our change orders and move forward from this project. Get the answer on our change orders and move forward from this project. Now, some things we can control and some things we can't. So what I put together is, and it's about at the ninety percent point, is a uh, request for proposal to be able to go out and solicit companies to bid on the work to take all of the body of evidence that is required for an audit. And to uh, you know, make sure that we have everything that we need in one neat place, all in a big PDF that's indexed. Validated, verified, that we've dotted our i's, crossed our t's, we have all the paperwork stacked up in one place. Um, there are some companies that do this kind of work and some firms that do this work. So that we hand it to the state with a cover letter and say, hey, Leger's closing our projects. We don't know when you're gonna get to auditing us, but oh, by the way, our stuff's all in order. So we're talking about six years worth of meeting minutes from here with every vote and all the paperwork, all the way through Marcia making payments. All the EDO forms, um, all the uh, the change orders, everything that ONG gives us, and they're gonna give us a disc or a thumb drive, I'm sure, or whatever it is, all that paperwork is in one place, it's assembled. The files are all converted to standard indexed with cover sheets where you can go right through each thing and cradle to grave. From the inception of the project, all the way through closeout, is ready to go on two DVDs, one for each school, or thumb drives or whatever. And we can give them to the state. And the reason I think this is really important is because, um, unlike some of you youngsters out there, I'm getting kind of long in the tooth here. And um, you know, the fact of the matter is that five or six years from now, trying to reassemble this when the state gets their stuff together for an audit could be a disaster. And, um, in fact, I'd like to stop for a minute, and Wayne, uh, if you want to share with me the story you shared with me about another school district in closeout. And what happened, um, this could bring it kind of close to home.
Yeah, we, um, I walked into a project that was just finishing up when uh, I was hired there and uh, six years after I got there, they decided they were gonna go to audit. And nobody knew where any of the paperwork was, uh, we had to go back to the um, owner's rep, the general contractor to get paperwork, fortunately, they were excellent. Uh, got us most of it, um, but it was just a nightmare, and there was nobody there that was on any of the building committees or, or anything. Um, so it was all just, you know, uh, kind of going by what was in the minutes, nobody could tell us exactly what happened or when. Uh, I strongly recommend, I think Steve is on the hundred percent the right angle. Why it's fresh in everybody's mind, get everything together, so it's in one spot in the town hall or wherever it's gonna be. So when the state decides to finally audit it, we ship that up and here it is.
Yeah, and, and my thought on this is, I'm not sure what it's gonna cost, I didn't want to speculate the cost on this call because I don't want to influence any bids. But we get the bids in, we get the work done, we charge it off to the project, I believe that under our guidance and what we have, we don't even need to get permission from the town council, the mayor has to sign the contract, don't get me wrong, but um, it's within the auspices of what we've been given within our budget, and I think it's the right move for us, you know. Who knows what could happen the next couple of years, I mean, Pete, you could win Powerball and be studying yourself in Florida. I mean, Dan, um, you know, who knows, you know, you, you might decide to retire. Um, you know, Gary is gonna be fishing somewhere, Marcia Hancock's the finance director, she could retire and move on. Uh, and remember, we changed out IQM two to the new system, um, there's a lot of stuff that's occurred that there may be some forensics involved in putting all this together, and making sure that we have everything that we need um, to do this and do this right, so I expected our next meeting to float the draft RFP out to you guys, you can take a look at it, we could vote on that. We'll get it out, three, four weeks later, we'll get the bids in, we'll pick a company. And that company will interface with ONG, Silver Petraselli, the town clerk's office, the building official as needed. The, any state, everyone involved, to put together, like I said, index, you click on the stuff, and it's all there. The other thing I'm also gonna ask them to do is to help out with another thing. ONG, on every single change order, if you look at the ones attached to our agenda, they always put a little thing at the top that says offices, school construction grants. Eligible or ineligible, sometimes it's got a mix, where part of it is and part of it's not, but uh, the fact is that we spent millions of dollars that was outside of ONG, now where it's all the soft costs. And figuring out which of those are eligible and not eligible, keep in mind, we got the two-phase project, we got phase one, the building. Phase two, we got FF and A, um, and I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure we got all this stuff together, and we have a better feel for what's eligible and not eligible. And if the people we hire are used to doing, dealing with the state, they could use their own expertise and put stuff on a spreadsheet for us. It's just for the town, it says, here's what we think is gonna be found eligible, here's what we think is not eligible. They're also ONG gonna look at our dates for change orders versus when they were filed to the state, so we get a feel there. And say, all right, here's what youth, the towns share will probably be at the end of this whole thing. And that way, Marcia Hancock can go to the mayor and say, here's what we need to bond. What we need to put on short-term borrowing, because there's a problem with over bonding, and there's a real problem with under bonding. So, because it costs money every time you bond, so, um, this eh, exercise is not something we as a bunch of uh, uh, you know, volunteer committee members can do. Um, it's gonna probably take my guess as someone, three to four months to do the work uh, that needs to be done, and maybe I'm overstating the work, but just remember, every time we approved a, a ladle for the kitchen at Leger Middle School for the ki- uh, the galley that, that cafeteria. That ladle, there's a chain of paperwork that goes back on that as far as the state's concerned, and even if it's something that might not be reimbursed, the fact of the matter is, it never hurts to ask. So, we're gonna go through that drill, we'll have some good numbers, and uh, I think that is in the best interest of the town. I got a lot of head nods up and down from town council on this, um, and I think it'll be money well spent. If it saves us just a month or two on, on the borrowing of that eleven percent. It'll probably have paid for itself, uh, is the way I see. Any comments on that, further comments?
Steve, was there a source of funding for this?
Uh, it just comes out of the general uh, project fund. I mean, I mean, we just, uh, but I'm, we're gonna ask them in the RFP to, uh, to price each school. And, and even though, we have to do it together, it has to be awarded together because we have one set of minutes from the meeting. I mean, stuff like that, it would make no sense to have two different companies doing each school, so we will award it, but they will bill us two bills. And we will go to the state and actually ask the state to reimburse us for that as part of the reimbursement and see what they say. So, any other comments?
Uh, goes to say, Steve, it's positively, positively the way to go, that's what I did in Groton, the first set of schools. I hired staff myself to do it, and we had a clean audit, uh, everything was in file drawers, I came down, spent four hours for three schools and left. The second one, we hired a, a project manager, because it was a little bit more difficult, and they were, that was part of their uh, scope was to manage the OG, who's building the building, manage the architects, also to manage the owner. And getting all of its paperwork together and keeping it at one place, knowing that the reimbursement is six years out. So that was, that, that's following the same uh, same process, and it works, it really does.
All of that RFP out to you guys in the um, uh, for our next meeting, you guys can review that. I'd like to get, I'll try to get that to you in advance, you give me comments, so we can vote on a clean copy at the next meeting. Um, and again, I think there's some firms out there that do this kind of work, what we really want are people who are experienced with closing out projects with the state, that have sat there and argued the case for things with the state. Um, and one of the things I do plan to remind the state of, as they consider our change orders, consider our price per square foot, and that we, and feel free to use Leger as a, uh, as an example when people come in with their eight hundred dollar square foot schools. So, um, I think that takes care of that, um, Lisa, I'm looking at the agenda for things we can actually vote on, and I don't think there's anything else we can do because uh, everything else is tied to the schools. So with that, we uh, let us know, uh, again, respond to Lisa's uh, note for a meeting on the twenty sixth.
I'll get that out right after the meeting.
And um, so uh, we will uh, we'll continue to move forward, and one thing I will say is that for the period of time that Mark Bancroft was working on this project, I know he filled a lot of filing uh, cabinets full of stuff. Um, I don't know where in town hall they are, but Marcia Hancock assured me that they are around, um, and uh, the, you know, we started this project out with Roxanne helping us, and uh, it quickly got to the point where she said, hey, this is gonna take up uh, half the time with the town council, and then of course, Lisa's come on board, which has been a, a godsend because, um, you know, the minutes are just clean, they're done, everything's good, so um, we're so glad to have you on board of the project, it helps out because um, that is always been a difficult thing, is getting secretaries to write minutes for commissions and boards, and um, ours are very thorough. So with that, is there anything else, I see that Counselor Washington has dialed in, and we're closing out the meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I apologize, Steve, uh, I just got out of work. And uh, but my, my, my plan is to attend uh, on a more, on a much more timely basis, sorry. Uh, just to uh, kind of come to speed, I know that Counselor Davis, it asked me to, to assist in uh, anything you guys may need from a perspective of uh, from my background, so I just want to make sure you guys know I'm, I'm readily available, and I'm gonna.
Well, uh, uh, Counselor Washington, just to let you know, we were not able to vote on um, items uh, on the, uh, tonight, because we were short a member, uh, we didn't have a quorum. And part of that is because uh, we need the town council to appoint, um, our fifth member. Um, we have also a vacancy that the board of ed needs to appoint. So, um, you know, I'm sure when we're done here, you know, when Wayne gives his report back to the superintendent, he's gonna say, hey, they couldn't pay any bills or anything because they didn't have a quorum. Well, by the way, we need to get the board of ed to appoint another person, I will point out one thing is that the um, I don't think you as a member of the town council can be on the committee, because that's a conflict, I think, but.
I was.
Uh, if you happen to know other folks in the town that are, um, you know, skilled in some of the trades that would be able to contribute, or just all around, just you know, super knowledgeable at everything. That would help us, um, some things, I don't know when you chimed in on the meeting, but we were just discussing the closeout process of an RFP to get a uh, a, a team in to help us assemble our body of evidence. Uh, Wayne gave a, a little explanation of a project that he walked into, that six years after it was done, when they went to go to audit, everyone that was involved in the project had, um, you know, moved to Florida or won Powerball or something.
It happens all the time.
And there was nobody there to help in the audit, and. You know, our goal is to have a package ready to go, tied up with a nice, pretty bow that says, here, state. If you're bored, audit Leger now, because our stuff's in order. And I think that will help out as we move forward, so.
Yep, no, I agree completely.
So, uh, we're at, we're at that, we're gonna actually close out our meeting here, and we're on a special meeting tonight, we're gonna meet, um, on the twenty sixth. If everyone can make it, I can get a quorum, uh, we've got some bills to approve, mostly, at this point, we're closing out trade allowances in our, um, uh, most of our change orders tonight are all negative change orders, you know, we're actually getting money back toward GMP. Um, but eh, they're, they're just allowances we didn't spend. Um, and one thing I will say is although, uh, in some of our most recent meetings, there's been some ONG bashing going on. Um, one thing I will, will state is that the financial cost control for this project has been excellent. Um, the percent of change orders that were not asked for by us, um, and when the trades tried to, um, um, get back some of the money that left on the table, so to speak, by bidding low, uh, through change orders, um, uh, they've been our advocate to uh, to fight for those things, even though ONG makes more money. When the, when the GMP goes up, because the change orders are higher, you know, they're, they're uh, uh, you know, their markup on the work is there, so they're actually making more money, so when they fight to keep the costs down for us, um, they're actually uh, you know, hurting their own bottom line, so to speak.
Yep, no, I, I understand, and, and having done a lot of roads and bridges and facilities. Uh, facilities are the toughest one because they have so many tentacles, because you have so many trades involved in buildings, and there's so many, it's, it's, it's a lot of watching you have to do, so even though you may have you know, if you, if you, I'm just gonna say this out, if you had brought in an inspection group that, that oversaws a third party completely, doesn't mean these problems go away, because you still, you're still playing cat and mouse with the people in the trade, and if they have people moving in and out of the trade, which is like any company, you have a guy working, he leaves. Another guy comes in to fill in his spot, he may not know exactly where the last guy left off. And, and he takes off based on what he thinks is correct, and so things get missed. And uh, depending how deep they are in the walls and shit like that, excuse the expression, it, it's easy to understand how things, I, I got jobs. And it's not by any fault of the, of the prime, it's just you get so many subcontractors on the job, it's just really difficult to keep them all in check. So, good luck, you guys have done well.
Thanks for that, and uh, and again, we hope you'll join us in the meeting on the twenty sixth, then um, the uh, you know, we, we don't get a lot of people dialing into our meetings, and um, we're uh, uh, we always look forward to have more folks from town council and others. So with that, um, we weren't able, we didn't have a quorum tonight, so um, uh, with that, I move that we adjourn.
Second feedback affair.
All right, on paper, that'd be you, Gary. All right, we adjourn, good night, everyone.